Okay, we are going to go ahead and get started at 6:00 PM. And I want to welcome you to the Allegheny County Board of Education Candidate Forum. This is an opportunity for us to listen and to learn and to think about the future of education in our county together. I am Dr. Lysia Remensky. I'm a professor of Communication Studies at Frostburg State University. I also coordinate our Communication Leadership Lab, and I'm a steering committee member of our Choose Civility Allegheny County Chapter. And our efforts to promote civil discourse, friendly and needed conversations, is at play here tonight in having this forum. Our partners coming together to do this include the Allegheny County Women's Republican Club, the Allegheny County Women's Action Coalition, and the Allegheny County Commission for Women. So a lot of women's leadership is here involved with this effort. I wanted to also thank Tanya Gomer, whose idea was to come together to give us another opportunity to hear from our candidates this evening. This is an important kind of work to be serving in education, to be serving our county in public service in this way. So this is an important election. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So you can see there on the left, these are our Choose Civility principles, which we'll practice this evening. This isn't a debate, though. This is really, as I said, an opportunity to listen. So what we're going to do is have some of our community moderators ask questions. We'll rotate that so each of our candidates has an opportunity to answer first. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond, and their time will be kept by Tanya, and she'll flag it for you so you know how long you have left and if you need to wrap up. You should address the audience, of course, not each other. It's not a debate, as I said. And we aren't going to open it to questions this evening. That's something you could follow up and talk to the candidates about another time. We didn't share the questions ahead of time. The partners involved, the sponsors, kind of came together to create the questions. And I think that's about it as far as the background. I did want to also say that we want to thank Jason Huber, who is filming this evening, and this will be available through the Choose Civility Allegheny County YouTube channel later. It's not being livestreamed, though. I also wanted to thank again Tanya for bringing this idea to Choose Civility. Michelle Twig, our president of the Women's Commission in Allegheny County, and Jackie Sams for her input from the Women's Action Coalition. Also Renee Mason and Ashley Swinford from the Allegheny County Library System, who I worked with on Choose Civility efforts, also contributed. And I'd like to introduce our community moderators. As I said, I won't begin the questions, but we are going to pass it on to each of the different community members here at the table. We have Delaney Blue Ball, and they'll raise their hands as I say them in their order. She's a recent graduate of Frostburg State in Political Science and Law and Society, and she's a candidate for the Democratic Central Committee in our county. Tanya Gomer is also going to ask a question. She's going to do more than one thing here tonight, so it's impressive. And she is the president of the Allegheny County Women's Republican Club and the president of the Leadership Allegheny Alumni Group. Promise Harvey is with us, too. She is a senior at Southern Garrett High School and a member of the Allegheny, or rather, the Western Maryland Republicans Club. Brooklyn Noel, she's a Fort Hill senior and student member of the Board of Education this past year. Jim Robertson, former BOE candidate and a Western Maryland Joint Apprenticeship and Training Committee Training Director, in retirement now. He is also involved in the Chamber of Commerce Education Committee, serving as chair. And Michelle Twig, as I mentioned, chair of our Women's Commission in Allegheny County and also a member of the Women's Republican Club. So the mission of the Board of Education, if you could move on to the next slide, please, we just wanted to remind you of, is to, as you can see, help achieve a vision for county's education. And it's important to think about how this is something that involves sub-level advocacy, thinking about funding, thinking about resources, thinking about vision. And there are five elected members and one non-voting student member on the board, and this year we are going to be electing three positions, and these are staggered positions for four-year terms. I wanted to add here, too, that citizen engagement comes in the form of community members in Allegheny County submitting questions to the superintendent to be an item on the agenda at the board's meetings. And here we go. Okay, what we will do is I'm going to kind of just start down the line this way, so you'll answer first, Linda. And this question will help us to know who you are a little bit better. So we will have it up on the screen. We will repeat it periodically. You know, also just be aware of the timekeeping, and we'll just help you along the way. We'll help each other. That's the Choose Civility way. Please introduce yourself, share where you're from, and give some details about your education and experience, as well as your motivation for running to serve the Board of Education in Allegheny County.
Hi, I'm Linda Widmire. All but six months of my life when I was living on a Navy base in New Jersey. I've been raised in Allegheny County, just about three miles down the road in Bowling Green. Graduated from Allegheny High School. I attended Allegheny Community College, Frostburg State, and I graduated from Geneva College in Beaver Hills, Pennsylvania. I worked for the Board of Ed for 20 years. I was at Fort Hill High School. I was at the Career Center. I spent time at Mount Savage Middle and Westmore Middle. I worked for an at-risk program where students were identified at the middle school level for not finishing high school, not receiving a diploma. There were a number of things that stood in their way at the middle school level. My job was to encourage them, tutor them, offer opportunities for those students, to let them see what they really were capable of doing. And many, many, many of them over the years became very, very successful. I've decided I wanted to run for the Board again because I'm very happy with the way the Board is working right now. We've had some very, very dark times, and I just want to be part of something that's working for the good of the county and the kids in this county.
Hello, my name's Megan Miller. I'm a resident of Allegheny County, obviously. I attended Allegheny High School. I graduated in '01. I was born on Bond Street. I went to Head Start. I graduated in 2008 with my MAT degree, the Masters of Arts in Teaching. I do have a few years' experience in education. I've taught every grade from pre-K to college. Most recently, I was an elementary art educator at Salem Avenue Elementary in Hagerstown. I commuted 70 minutes for eight years of my life, and then the pandemic hit, and that caused my family to reassess our priorities. Prior to WCPS, I taught at ACPS as a temporary teacher for four years. I have 10 years' experience at Friends Aware. I did that while I was in high school and college. I've worked and paid my way through school. Like I said previously, I did attend Head Start in Allegheny. And if you want someone that truly cares about public education and everyone involved, if you're in special education, or if you have a family member that's gifted and talented, I want to work with all families. I just, I love education, and I love working with students and teachers. So.
Hello, my name's David Bond. I'm a resident of this county since the day I was born. I was born in Cumberland. I went K-12 at Mount Savage. I went to AC. I went to Frostburg. I've taught at AC in adult continuing education. I've taught at Frostburg in anatomy and physiology. I have my own online continuing education program for chiropractors and physical therapists as well, not as many. But anyway, I raised six kids in the system, all of whom graduates of, two from Fort Hill and four from Mountain Ridge. And that's why I decided to run for the Board. I was kind of, this will be my third run for the Board. I've had two two-year terms, and this time is for a four-year term. But anyway, I was kind of disheartened with the way things were running and the way our school system, the shape it was in, and some of the policies and things that we had. So I decided to run for the Board to make some changes. And it's been probably the worst time in history to be on a school board with COVID and all the stuff that we've dealt with. So it was a real, I feel like I'm finally starting to understand how this thing works. It's taken a while to get, you know, wrap your head around what's going on. There's a lot of moving parts. So I enjoy education, all of my kids, but the youngest, there's always that one, right? So the older five all have at least a professional degree or better. And my youngest daughter's in med school. I'm proud of her. She just finished her first year of med school. The youngest one is, you know, he's been a challenge, but sometimes you have that. So anyway, I'm running again, and I appreciate your vote, and there's a lot of good things to do. I think we've done a lot of good things, and we have more to do. So thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you. And of course, we're going to skip over Keisha. If she shows up, we will respond as seems fit, but on to Lori.
Hi, my name is Lori Leffley, and I was born and raised in Cumberland. I went away to college and came back and chose to start a family and raise a family here. I went to University of North Carolina in Wilmington, and I have degrees in Biology, Chemistry, and Anthropology. I run a local business here, and it's been pretty successful. I have five children, and four of them are school-aged, and the fifth one, she will be school-aged in about two years. And I started getting involved over the last year, paying attention to the school board and realizing how important it was. So here I am.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob Farrell. I am also born and raised here in Allegheny County. I've loved this county, and I've loved working here. I was a Maryland State Trooper for 28 years. I went to Potomac State, Allegheny College, and Frostburg. I started the criminal justice program at the Career Center, which I was afforded the opportunity to write and then teach for four years, and then worked for the Board of Education doing security for a few more years. I saw a lot of things that I thought needed to get changed with the Board. My wife had passed away years ago. She ran for the Board, and we kind of did it collaboratively. And I've been on the Board now for almost four years. I think we've made a lot of progress. We've made a lot of changes. I think things are running fairly well now, and I think there's still more work to do. So I guess that's why I decided to run again. So I appreciate any help anybody could give me, and I thank you all for coming.
Hi, my name is Janet Hebner, and I'm not born in, I'm not, I'm raised in Allegheny County, but I was, I'm a West Virginia girl. Our family moved here in 1962 when my dad was transferred with what was then the BNO Railroad. And I'm a South End kid. I attended Johnson Heights, Washington, it was actually Washington, wasn't Washington Middle at the time, but Fort Hill. And I also obtained an associate's degree in medical laboratory technology at what was then ACC, and worked for several years in Sacred Heart in the laboratory, and then moved on to Frostburg State, which was at that time Frostburg State College, and received a bachelor's in English. When I married in 1984, I moved with my husband to Denver, Colorado, and I pursued my master's degree there and received a master's in science in public health from the University of Colorado Health Sciences Center Department of Medicine. And I did my, we lost my younger sister to cancer in 1999, and that sort of fueled my interest in cancer research. I worked in a benchtop cancer research laboratory, and then moved on to, when we moved back to this area with our families to be closer to home. I've worked in clinical research and consulting at Westad in Rockville. And I've moved back home because I love Allegheny County, and I've been involved, quite involved in the, as a volunteer, for several different organizations since I've been back here, and I am happy to be running for Board of Education because I think this is a great time, a great opportunity, to see things move forward.
Thank you to all the candidates, and I just wanted to remind everyone to make sure your cell phones are turned off and that our restrooms are right outside the doors to the left and to the right. And we are going to move on to our next question.
Good evening. What perspectives would you bring to support your decision-making on the Board?
Megan.
I'm sorry, we start with Megan.
What perspectives? Well, the perspectives that I'm bringing to the Board, hopefully, I'm a mother. I'm extremely patient. I'm an artist. I'm a small business owner, so I would be able to, I hope, think creatively for solutions. And I also hope to be able to talk and have conversations with, not just talking, but actual two-way communication with anyone and everyone in Allegheny County. I want to be accessible to the families, and that's all families. I know what it's like to rely heavily on public education, and I know the importance that public education has for so many families in Allegheny County. So my perspective is one of importance. Like, you need to act like your hair is on fire. We need to do this for our kids. This is important. So that's my perspective. I'm energetic.
Thank you. Dr. Bond.
So my perspective, I guess, having ran my own business and practice and other side businesses and such for 33 years now, is a business perspective. So understanding, for example, in the last four years, our budgets have been in on time. We've only asked for maintenance of effort, and the money that's left over now, our surplus, so to speak, is of greater value than it's higher value or more money put away and not spent than we've ever used. And with that, we've been able to do some pretty cool things. We were putting, fixing the stadium, of course, with the stadium fund people that put some significant funds into that, a field house for Allegheny. We're putting a weight room up at Mountain Ridge for them, and we're doing that without borrowing a dime. That was all out of surplus. So the perspective of making sure that our audits are on time, that our budgets are where they should be, that we're getting the best value, as well as rewarding our teachers with the way we've done it. We've given raises to our teachers. We gave $600 bonuses to our teachers. We gave $300 bonuses to our non-credential staff. So overall, the system has been running pretty well, and that's my perspective, is working with the people on the Board. It's not always the easiest thing to do. And, you know, talking to people is a great thing, but when you have two people with two very different ideas and opinions as to how things are going to go, sometimes it does get a little rough and rocky. But the goal is that the kids, just having attended the three graduations and the Career Center's certificate program, you get to see the end product of what we're doing, and it's pretty amazing. So it's a good feeling, and it's good to see with a good education, whether it be in career skills or whether it be in the classroom. That's why I'm doing it, because education's important.
I also bring a business perspective, and I'm a mother, and I've got a wide range of children. So I have a three-year-old up to a 14-year-old. So I've seen how different aspects of what has happened over the last two years have impacted them differently. And with the business aspect, I have pretty much run a business for the last 12 or 13 years, so I have experience with budgets, and I'm pretty easy to get along with and easy to communicate with, and I think that is key, open communication. And I look forward to working with everybody and making Allegheny County Board of Education even better than it already is.
I don't know how to accumulate all that. I do, you know, I spent three and a half years on the Board. We are doing better. We are progressing to put stuff in Allegheny, Fort Hill, Mount Ridge. David did. His business experience has helped immensely, and we have good people in place. We have a local superintendent, and we have people that work together, I think, to get the job done. And all you have to do is be at one of those graduations on Saturday or be at the career graduation on Thursday, and you would know, you know, how great our kids are doing. I think at Allegheny, they announced that the kids there got $4.3 million in scholarship money. So I think that what I bring to the table is that I've been there, I've worked in the system, I taught in the system, I have other experiences outside of the system, and I am fiscally conservative, and, you know, I think that's one of the things that you need to be, to have things turn out the way they are. And I think we've worked to do that.
I think the perspective that I bring is the sort of the pattern that ties all my various jobs together, from laboratory technician to medical consultant. I've worked with a lot of multidisciplinary teams during my various careers, and as Dr. Bond said, when you work with multidisciplinary teams and people coming from different directions and different backgrounds, yes, you're bound to, you're bound to come up against some strong opinions, strong opposing opinions. And I am, being a middle child, I sort of have had those skills from the beginning of trying, of kind of being a peacemaker, and then after raising two daughters, I think that, I'm very pleased with the concept, the foundation of Choose Civility, because I think when the students are the common factor, and in the end, we all have that common ground that we want the students to succeed, I think we have to get back to basics and learn the give and take so that we can come up with the best thing for our students. And I think the other aspect that I bring is that I've been a data, not really a data nerd, but a data analyst, because I think data-based decision-making can take a lot of the subjectivity out of finding a way forward.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to Linda. And we would like to remind you to speak directly into the microphone and to not address
What is? No, I just don't have to answer the perspective. I'm the last. My perspective that I bring to this is, I think I'm a good listener, and I want to hear from people. It matters to me what parents think. Having worked with at-risk kids, those parents are overlooked completely. And it's important to me that every child in this county gets a quality education, that they're treated fairly and equally. I have a perspective from being on the ground. I have been in the schools. I know what the teachers are talking about. I know what the kids are talking about. I know what the parents want. I raised four children. Thankfully, they're all graduated, all have good jobs, and I get great Christmas presents every year, and it was all worth it. They were all products of the public school system. I have never wanted to leave this county. I've never looked at other jobs in other counties where I would have to move away. I think we have an amazing faculty in our public school system. They're bright, they're creative, they'll do anything for the kids that they have to. I am very interested, the perspective I bring is for this building right here, the Career Center. I don't think it's used enough. I think that's what we need to look at. We need to look at the kids getting trade, getting something that they don't always have to go to college for. And that's my perspective, that every kid deserves to be themselves and get the education
Asha, yeah? This question will begin with Dr. Bond. What is your vision for education in this community?
Just like Linda was saying, I have, and I said from the very first day I ran four years ago, that I wanted to see the Career Center increase its enrollment. For that very reason, there's a lot of kids that they have no interest in college, but you can get a great job with a career, you can have a great career with a degree from this facility. So that's probably at the top. And interestingly enough, our attendance is up next year for this, by quite a bit. Enrollment has increased. The other thing that we added over my term is we brought back the ag program into our schools, and it as well is increasing. So, I mean, look at the problem we have right now, where they're saying we won't have wheat for bread, that our grain supplies are going away. We need farmers. If we don't have farmers and ag people, we don't eat. I like to eat. So I want that program to grow. So my vision is, let's make that more acceptable. The other thing I noticed, this is just, this is how my brain works, but at the graduation ceremonies, one of the things I noted was, how many kids looked you in the eye, shook your hand with a firm handshake when you told them congratulations? There were enough people, enough students that concerned me, I spoke with the superintendent about it, that didn't look you in the eye, didn't shake your hand, or, you know, was very, very weak. Well, as an employer, somebody coming to be hired, as in any field, if you have, don't make eye contact, your initial impression, your handshake, if that's weak, a child at a disadvantage. So there's also more to education than just, we need this program, we need this program. We need to develop, we need to create a great product at the end. And we're doing a really good job, but there's things we can do to improve it, and that's what we're working on. So I've got flagged.
Laura, we're doing Wondert Hall with your time.
When I first decided that I was going to run for school board, my, I guess, my main platform issue was the Career Center. And I think it's really important that we have, that we learn skills in high school, and we can either further that after high school, or high school children are prepared for a job once they graduate, or at least entry level into a skilled field. And I think it was three or four board meetings ago, Mr. Brewer introduced their expansion for the Career Center, and I was happy to see that that already happened. So I would like to see that go even further and expand on the different programs that are available. I recently became friends with a teacher at the Career Center, and I had no idea that they had so many programs and that some of the kids were qualified. It was some kind of certification once they graduated. And with all the learning loss that's happened over the last two years, I'd like to see stronger math and reading programs to help the kids get back up to speed, and that, once we get there, then they'll be better prepared for college, they'll be better prepared for the future. better prepared for the future.
I guess Linda and I are the only two here that did work here at the Career Center, and everyone here has the same thing. We want this place to succeed. We want all kids to succeed. It was very troubling to me when we had the COVID, that especially for the Career Center kids, they weren't able to complete and work in their skill area. There is, this is a diamond in the rough, and it's been said many, many times. We have so many good people here at the Career Center, but we have also those people in every other school. Like I said, I was at all the graduations, I'm so proud of those kids. I mean, and so proud of the staff that they have, you know, brought these kids forward to the point where they are. A lot of them going, you know, onto higher education, some of them going into the military. And I think that that is indicative of Allegheny County. We proceed forward and we do things that others don't seem to struggle with. And I think it's because of some of the people here. We were one of the few schools that during the COVID, we got our kids back in class before many other counties in the state of Maryland. And I think that we did a lot of good work there, and I'm real proud of it, and I hope it continues.
My vision, I think, would be to have the schools, to be in, all schools be places where teachers feel appreciated. Because, because of COVID, I think that the teachers in particular, and the families and the students have been through a traumatic experience, and I think everybody's reeling from these past two years. And so I think if we can create an environment where teachers feel appreciated and where students can catch up from some of the deficiencies, where they've gotten behind in the last two years. And I thought I heard in one of the recent board meetings that there will be some tutoring going on. And I think having students involved in the community and having student business partnerships is a great opportunity in addition to having a career technical center for students to get a feel for what it's like to work in different occupations. So I think, yes, just the expansion of the career tech center, and the expansion of opportunities for students in the community, in a place where teachers can feel appreciated.
I think the future of education in Allegheny County is a bright one. I think COVID and the pandemic has taught us how important it is for our kids to be in school, how important it is for our teachers to be able to see their students face-to-face in that setting. I think it's important for us to have community partnerships. At one time, there was a program in the public school system called World of Work, and those kids as seniors got to go out to work, and we had a partnership with employers, which was an excellent opportunity. And right now, the kids that are here at the Career Center, the nursing students go out to the nursing homes and the hospitals, our carpentry and masonry kids get, are building a house over Almond Chester Road, they've built numerous houses. That's what our kids need. They need hands-on. And as, having been involved with at-risk kids, you need to think out of the box. Every kid is different, every kid learns differently. And I think this system, right now, with the superintendent we have, is going to go great places and do great things. And our teachers I know are on board, and we have a wonderful college, two-year college, and we have a wonderful four-year college. So between all of the partners, I think the education program is, has wonderful future.
It's my turn. My vision for the community, I am an artist, I think creatively, I think big. So my vision may not be what is the end result, but in order to hit the mark, you have to aim above it. So for me, Allegheny County, ideally, it would be self-sufficient. We would be educating our future and my kids could stay here. My kids could stay here and not have to move away in the future, like so many people do. So ideally, for our community, not just Cumberland or Frostburg, but for the entire county, it would be wonderful if the community partnerships were in place, that if you're in a certificate completer program, or you're college-bound, whatever your track is for your career path as a student, I hope that you have a place and a job and a happy place, you know, a career for you in Allegheny County. So just keeping our families here, if possible, and seeing what industries we have and businesses that are around. I know you had mentioned, oh, sorry, I just remembered something. Mr. Farrell, I did teach at CCTE.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not supposed to address them. So I did not just do that. I did teach art at the Career Center a couple of years ago, whenever I taught for four years with ACPS. So I went around to different schools and I was a temporary art teacher for four years. So Career Center and Mountain Ridge High School.
It's time. I just wanted to remind everyone, don't be afraid of that microphone.
You got a close, yeah.
That's for everyone.
Good evening, everyone. What are your thoughts about input from the non-voting student member of the board and other stakeholders, including parents, businesses, and the community?
I think that the input from community member, well, all of the members listed, especially the parents, is very important. And I think that they need the opportunity to be heard and that they feel comfortable coming to the meetings and saying what they need to say, and that they have a little bit of an input with the decision-making processes. I think the non-voting student member of the board, I think that's, it's a good perspective for the board, because there's actually a student on the boards that they can, they can have some input and, you know, some better understanding of what children are going through. And, you know, businesses, you know, they're a part of our community, and they would make good partnerships with the board and students for different, for different projects and...
I'm sorry, Megan. I'm sorry, I missed you. I think anybody that's on the Board of Education, and I've served and David's served and other folks that have been on there know that you always talk to the community. I talk to people in the community every day, whether at Lowe's or out eating dinner or wherever, and folks come up and tell you what they think. They call you on the phone, they email you, whatever, and I appreciate all that. I enjoy hearing from folks, I enjoy hearing the different perspectives from folks about how things, you know, they think things should go. And I enjoy explaining to them, you know, how we're doing things and which way we are going on, on different things. You know, we are, it has been a tough time with COVID, and trying to get the kids back up to speed is a very, very important thing. That's one of the drivers for me to run against, because I want to get the kids back up to where they need to be. And, you know, that was very hurtful for them. I mean, not just the being at home and doing virtual learning, but also when we got back to school and they had to wear masks, kids learn from one another, not just the teacher. They learn from one another. And they need that facial expression, they need to talk to each other. And I can't tell you how many people came to me, and I'm sure other members of the board, and thanked us for taking the masks off. So, you know, I think that's very important to hear from the public, to hear from everybody involved. Thank you.
My thoughts about the non-voting student member, I'll start with her first, or he, her, or him, or they, whoever they may be in the future. I think it's a puzzle. I think every, every single, every, every single actor in the play is part of the puzzle. So students, students, the students bring a very good perspective. Is it not worth it? The students bring a very important perspective, because they're right there in the front line along with, with the teachers. And so, and I think other communities members and businesses are also a piece of the puzzle because they can form those partnerships and they can be advocates for the school system. So I think it's important to take all of those, all of those opinions and all of the suggestions and all of the observations into account when trying to steer policy and make decisions that are best for the community and to keep the community healthy and productive and moving forward and meeting the future. Another thing I'd just like to mention is that as we're preparing students for the future, it's important to keep an eye towards what are the emerging job markets, so that those, those community partnerships can be addressed where we're having deficits and where, and as, as others have said, to have them not just think about college as, as the next step. Thank you.
In my current position, I am the legislative aide for delegate Mike McKay. And if you want to have an opportunity to listen to both sides of an argument, be in politics, especially during a session, because people want you to know. And sometimes all you have to do is ask. A lot of parents are not asked, and they have opinions, and many have had bad experiences. So I think it's important that we include parents in a lot of the decisions. Compromise is a big word. We don't always agree with one another, but we have to agree to compromise, whether that's with our students, with our parents, with our teachers, with our community partners. Funny story, when I was at Fort Hill, my kids were at Allegheny. And when something went on at Allegheny, the Fort Hill kids were ready to tell me. And I would go home to my kids and say, uh-huh, so what happened this weekend, so and so. But the other way around, my kids would tell me what the Fort Hill kids were doing, and they would say, how did you find that out? Kids talk, and they need to have the right to at least voice an opinion. Our student member may not be allowed to vote, but we should at least hear what her peers are telling her and give her the chance to tell us what is going on. It helps a lot.
My thoughts about input from those various community members listed, I'm all for it. I want to hear from you. Let's have more of it. Let's have a civil conversation and start this dialogue. This is how communities move forward. This is how we grow and develop and become bigger and better. I, I love Allegheny County, I love public education. I know we can do even better than what we are currently doing. I know that. I don't know exactly how, I don't have all the answers, but input from you and you participating by being here is a step towards the goal. I mean, that's why we're all here, because we care about our kids and we care about our community. So my thoughts, I'm all for it. Let's talk more to the local businesses. Let's talk more to any community stakeholder that we have in Allegheny County and that has a vested interest in our, our children's education and our community's future. I mean, we're worth having a civil conversation, our, our community is worth it. So I like it, let's have more of it.
So in response to the question, it's pretty simple, really. We have open discussion times or open input times that people are invited to, to give a response to the board at every meeting. The student member of the board always has an opportunity to, to voice what's happening in their world and what things they bring in our open meetings. One of the issues, though, is we don't get many people at our open meetings. So if you don't show up, or you don't talk to us with email or the calls, we don't know. We, even at the beginning of my term, my first term, we decided to take the show on the road, and we did. We went out, I don't know, I don't remember, eight or 10 times, was it? We went to eight or 10 different schools and had the meetings in the community so that people could attend. And there are more people sitting in these seats than we had at our open meetings that we took on the road. So it's all nice to say, we're going to have more people, but if people don't come out, you're not going to get input. So all input is good. I just want to make one comment about the previous statement. This year, we had our second student, this is incredible, I think, we had our second high school senior graduate that, with the P-Tech program, graduated with their high school diploma and their two-year degree from AC in cyber technology. And that's the second one, we had one last year. There are several more preparing to graduate from that program. And that's an incredible program, that's a giant program, actually. The other one that I wanted to do is, we, tutoring was brought up, we offered extensive tutoring to our students while we were down with COVID. And, you know, anybody that wanted or had need was able to access that. So, you know, we are doing, some of the stuff you don't see is behind the scenes and some of the stuff, if you don't come to our incredibly entertaining meetings, then you miss that. So thank you.
Educators today have a vast array of socioeconomic and social issues and topics to contend with in the classroom. What role should the school board play in addressing these challenges in our region? Mr. Farrell?
Wow, that's a long question. You know, we, as a school board, make policies. We have a policy committee that drafts policies, and that's made up of a lot of former educators and board members, and they put policies forward that cover a number of different topics, from, you know, discipline to, you know, how things are done in the school, how we do things on the board, all those things. I mean, there's a ton of policies. Really, I think that the bottom of the whole thing is that the superintendent kind of guides the ship. I think that we, right now, have a very, very good superintendent. He was born and raised in Allegheny County, he was educated here, he worked in the system, and I think he's doing an excellent job, especially through COVID. I think it was very, very helpful for us that he had the contacts in Allegheny County to be able to work through that terrible thing with education. You know, he worked with the Health Department, he worked with the county, we worked with a lot of different folks. And, and I think that that, I don't know if that answers all the socio-economic and social issues, but I think that's a large start. So, thanks.
Okay, I'm glad you went first on that one.
Okay. I think there are a lot of, there's a lot, we're facing an opioid crisis, and we have a big, a big percentage of people living in poverty in our county. And I've seen it firsthand and through working... And I've seen it firsthand and through working as volunteer at a couple of local food banks, or food, food pantries and also in going, when the, when the pandemic first struck. And I participated in Feed Western Maryland and saw people living in conditions that I, I really felt like I had been insulated from. So I know that those children from those families are going to school. And I, I know that they're getting different messages in, in school than they're getting at home. They may have someone at home who's not kind and respectful, but, but they love that person because that person is their home. And then, and so they're, they're trying to, they're trying to reconcile what they're hearing at home and then what they're hearing in school. And so I think it's been really important that, that guidance couns, councils, counselors have stepped up, that, that there have been more and that there have been psychologists in the schools to help not just the kids, but the teachers to deal with all this incongruity. And so I think that's, you know, that's, that's where we need to continue that. We need to, just need to continue to be aware of it and try to think creatively to deal with it.
I think our teachers are doing an excellent job, but it's a tough job. They don't have time during the day to teach what they need to teach, reading, math, geography, socioeconomic problems. Some of the things that they're being bombarded with should be done at home. I'm a firm believer that your family values and morals need to be addressed. The kids I worked with that were economically disadvantaged, it wasn't because their parents didn't love them, it wasn't because their parents didn't want the best for them, but it was because they found themselves in a situation that they didn't know how to get out of. And that's unfortunate. But our teachers need to concentrate on teaching our students. And our families need to step up and do what they can. Guidance counselors, psychologists in the schools, they can only do so much. And our teachers can only do so much. So I'm for the teachers, I'm for the teachers teaching what they need to teach so that our kids are successful with whatever path they choose. But it's not something we're going to solve in one day. It, I think we have an excellent superintendent. I worked for five different superintendents while I worked for the Board of Ed. And I can tell you of the ones that I thought were the fairest, who had the teachers' backs, who did what they could, were the ones who were locally grown, who had come up through the ranks as teachers and supervisors and they knew what our community needed and they were the ones that I thought were the best.
Hello, it's me again. Yeah, lots of challenges. It's, it's our job on the Board of Ed to make sure that the teachers have what they need and the students have what they need to get the best education for them. We have, we have that ability to come up with new ideas and to seek out the programs to help fill these gaps. Earlier, my, my new friends, they mentioned learning loss. And learning loss is huge. That is one of the main things I would like to focus on if I hopefully get your vote and get elected to the Allegheny County Board of Ed. The, the learning loss, and I would like to reference something because I didn't print all these papers for nothing. There, now I have to find what tab. Okay, so for learning loss, here's the actual number. Since COVID in 2018 and 2019 in math, 33% passed. And what, who I'm referring to, statewide, 90, 92% of students, and then it dropped down to 15%. That's like, the state reduced, went from 33 to 15% of passing in math. That's, that's, that's pretty bad. We, we need to come up with some ideas to fix learning loss. And how do we get the word out to parents about the, the tutoring that was mentioned earlier? So it's also messaging and getting the word out to parents and families.
So the messaging was, was there, it was on the board's webpage with access of how to get it and it was also on the school budget platform. So parents knew where the counseling or the tutoring was. The problem is the school is not a substitute. That's why I wrote, came first and came online. School is not a substitute for home life. You can't expect the teacher to, how can they possibly enforce, you know, if a student comes home and doesn't do their homework or never does their homework? And that was one of the things we heard a lot during the virtual time. It was the first time teachers had the ability to see into the home. So they're looking in their computer and seeing what's happening in the home and, you know, seeing kids sleep through the day and things like that. So without, without parents, without that home thing, we're not going to have that. As far as the school board, our, our position is and has been and will continue to be so long as I'm on the board if I have any say in it. And that is that we teach our students to respect everyone, not one person or another person or this race or that race. Everybody deserves respect and should be treated as such, which kind of falls in with the bullying thing. Over the past six months, as far as policies go with this, we've looked at more policies. We have an excellent policy committee, they're very, they do a great job. And over the past six months, we've reviewed, updated or created more policies than most boards on the Board of Ed doing six, doing four years, we did in six months. And as far as the role of working together there with addressing these challenges, you know, we did put more counselors into our school and I, I have to give credit to a lady setting up there midway back, somebody that we definitely have banged heads on the school board many times. But Deb Frank brought up that we should have more counselors in our school, more mental health counselors, more psychologists. And we've added, I'm going to get this wrong, six or eight? Six, seven? It was the middle number. So we've added seven since our term, our four years on the board. And I think that's a big step adding four, or seven licensed counselors into our system. And we're looking to get more, we just can't find them. So we do work together sometimes.
Yeah, we live in an area where we have a very high poverty rate. And although our poverty rate is very high, our schools fare very well. And they're generally in the upper percent or above 50% of proficiency for the different grades. And now this has changed with the learning loss from COVID, but before that, we've always fared very well. And so, you know, with our, with our poverty level, we need to focus on programs that, that help students from lower income levels and dealing with different, different issues, different things from home, different family life. And so we need, as a board, we should support funding for teachers' aides, more teachers for smaller classrooms, counselors. And I know that's been done and I know the board has been doing that. And I think that's something we should continue to focus on and continue to make sure that we have funding for.
Good evening. This question will begin with Ms. Heffner. How would you address differences of opinion in the community, in our schools and on the board to support a unified approach to educational policy and student achievement?
Well, I think we, we have been talking about this all along, that, that there are inevitably going to be differences of opinion. But I think we have to get back to civil discourse and mutual respect and, and meeting people where they are and trying to understand where their opinion comes from, whether it's out of fear, whether it's out of belief, or whether it's out of worry for their children and, and address those fears. And see if you can work from there to kind of get, lessen those fears and to try to reach a point of common ground where, where it might not be what everything one person wants or, or everything the other person wants, but reach a compromise that, so that, you know, you on the board can support, can, you can be showing a unified force like parents try to do. A unified, not a unified force, but a, a unified approach to solving any problems in the schools or in the community.
Can you repeat that question again? I can't see it.
Yes.
Thank you.
How would you address differences of opinion in the community, in our schools and on the board to support a unified approach to educational policy and student achievement?
I said before, the big word is compromise. We have to get along. We are trying to teach our children to get along and respect one another and it needs to start with the adults. People are always going to have different opinions. People are always not going to agree, but we're talking about our students, we're talking about our teachers, we're talking about Allegheny County, what's best for our system. And we have to compromise. I may not like what you like, you may not like what I like, but we have to come to that happy medium that we're doing the best for our educational system and for our students. That's my firm belief.
May I have you say the question again?
It is a long one.
It is.
How would you address differences of opinion? It isn't, there is.
Okay.
Differences of opinion in the community, in our schools and on the board to support a unified approach to educational policy and student achievement?
Well, the, the best thing to do would be to lead by example. So I don't plan on getting in any arguments or shouting matches with any of my hopeful board members. Guys, we just got to lead by example. I mean, the proof is in the pudding. We need to speak kindly to each other. Yes, we are going to disagree. Yes, we are going to have very, very sensitive issues that need to be discussed, but we can do it. We are adults. I have faith in you. And we just need to have these conversations. Online, social media may not be the best forum for some of these conversations. Just throwing that out there. But yeah, lead by example and listen to everybody's input. I think I would be pretty good at that. I have three little boys, eight, six and three. So there's a lot of disagreements at my house at moments. And yeah, I can handle the differences.
So when I initially ran four years ago, my understanding and what I thought I'd be able to do and what a board member or a board in general, what the board could do was radically different than my understanding setting here four years later. Some of the things you think you want to do or you can do aren't in our control, they're controlled by state or federal guidelines. Actually, probably 85 or more percent of what we do is controlled by a higher power. As far as supporting a unified approach and, and a policy on student achievement, I, I look at that really, that's our, we have excellent teachers and we have great administrators. That's their job. Their job is to come up with how we're going to teach our kids, what we're going to teach them and how that's going to be done. I see my job or my role as a board member is to make, to represent the majority of the community, the people that put me in office, to make sure that those policies sit well with our, our electorate, our kids, our students, of the community in general. And make sure that that's something that's going to not just be like a flash in a pan, a program that comes out for two years and then isn't funded anymore and it goes away and we lose it, whatever. Make sure the money's there, make sure it's a sensible statement or a policy that, a program that's making sense, that's going to do well for the community and then make sure that it, that it's implemented correctly. That's the board's job, not creating, you know, the unified approach to student achievement that's really outside of our realm.
So as far as differences of opinions with the board and the community, I mean, we need open conversation and transparency and input from all individuals involved and, and be able to have some discourse and, you know, talk everything out and, you know, listen to what everybody has to say and, and take everything into consideration. And, and I think that we can do that. It's, we can do that in a respectful way and that makes everybody feel like they've had some kind of input, some kind of involvement and satisfies everyone.
I guess I'm just going to reiterate pretty much what everybody else has said. The big, the big key word here is communication. We need to communicate with each other. We need to take each other's ideas, we need to accept them as good ideas and weed out however we need to do it and come to a common agreement. David's exactly right, some of the stuff does not come into our purview. It, it pretty much ends up in, in the classroom with the teachers. We have a very diversified community in Allegheny County. You know, from Georgia's Creek to Frostburg to Lavelle, to Cumberland, to Orleans, Flintstone, all different communities and all have different needs and different wants. And, you know, all don't always come together in, in the middle, but we need to, to work together and communicate with each other to make this thing work.
I probably don't need this microphone, but I'll use it just, just to be safe. So for your final question, what is your final statement about why the community should vote for you for the Allegheny County Board of Education?
I would really appreciate your vote if you're interested in the future because the kids are our future. And so I think that's really the bottom line and that's why I'm running. My kids are out the other end of public education and I do, I do wish they had had the financial fluency classes that are going on now in Allegheny County because they can't balance a bunch of it. But, but they did both graduate from college. But I, but I think a lot of people who are retired like myself, they're not really thinking too much about the future, but I'm, I'm thinking about future generations. And so I think if you're, if you're invested in the future, I think that's what we're all about, that's what I'm all about and I would definitely appreciate your vote.
We'll let Bob go next. We'll, we'll just come up this way. But you go next.
You mean I get to be second?
You do get to be second. Just to make sense, I would just throw you off.
I know, excuse me. You know, we, we just spent, I just spent three and a half years. David spent three and a half years and I think things are going very well now in the system. We've, we've made it through the COVID, hopefully. And we, you know, the, the money is good. The budget, the audit is on time. We have a good superintendent. The teachers have gotten raises. The, the, all the personnel got a bonus from the system for getting, for working hard in the, in the COVID time. I think things are, are doing very well. I think the kids, which is most important, are coming back. And I saw it so much, as I said, at the graduation, these kids are very resilient and they're, and they're coming back from a tough time. And I think that I, you know, I really want to continue that recovery and I want to make sure that we continue on the path that we seem to be on, which I think is a fiscally conservative path. We have new programs that are, I think, coming. You know, we've added more counselors, we've, we've done a lot of, we've added more security to the schools. We've done a lot of, a lot of things, so, you know, on the board. And I think that I'm really asking to, to be And I think that I'm really asking to be able to continue that. Thank you.
I never imagined that I'd be sitting up here. And if you can't tell, this is not my comfort zone at all. So, the last two years have really put this position into perspective. And it has made me realize that the Board, the Board of Education is the most important elected position there is. And I'm a concerned mom. We've dealt with a lot in the last two years. And, and that's fierce right now. And I would be honored if you would choose me to represent Allegheny County.
So, everything that Bob said, I guess I don't have to repeat that stuff again because a lot of that involved me. But when I ran five, four years ago, there were five things that were at the top of my list. One was to get a local, not necessarily local, but to get another superintendent. I wanted to see increased security because of, like I said earlier, along with the security, Deb's input, we ended up adding social workers as well. And we just added three more SSEs officers. And we continue looking for ways to work more with our local police, sheriff, Cumberland City, Frostburg City, State, ways of getting more SROs or police officers in our schools. It's just they're in short supply. We said we would keep our budget under control. We did. We got our audits in on time, which were always notoriously late. And we said we would increase morale. And all five of those things we accomplished in probably the worst environment you could possibly try to run a school system in. So, why do I want to run again? Well, you know, there's still stuff to do. And as I said, education is very important to me and I have a great love of education. So, I'd be honored and feel privileged to have your vote, to represent you all for four more years and continue the path. Without good schools, we don't have a good community. We don't have businesses looking to come here. And it always frustrates me when I go to Altoona or I go to, you know, Winchester or Hagerstown or Frederick and there's so much growth and so much stuff happening. And one of the big things I think is increasing and improving, continuing to improve our school system. And, you know, that's my priority. So, I thank you for your time.
Okay, well, I'm out of my comfort zone too, Laurie. And I just talked to her again. I'm sorry. Well, my name is Megan Miller and I would really appreciate your vote for Board of Ed. If you want somebody that is proof of what public education can provide for an individual and a family and a champion for, a cheerleader for public education, I, I fit that mold. I have relevant work experience, pre-K through college, eight years at elementary level at a Title I school, Salem Avenue Elementary in Hagerstown. It's the place to be. That's their saying. I, my heart's in it and I, I hope I get your vote. I mean, you either will or will not. You get three. There's a bunch of wonderful people up here to choose from. And yeah, I mean, I'm also making a decision on who else I'm going to vote for besides me. So, thank you candidates for helping me choose also. I have it narrowed down.
I only have some, one thing to say, that I ask for your vote because I truly love the kids in this county. When I was at Fort Hill, everyone I talked to, I talked to about my kids, my kids. And they would stop me and say, okay, which kids are you talking about? The kids at Fort Hill or your kids at home? And I treated the kids that I worked with at Fort Hill, at Mount Savage, all of them exactly the way I would treat my own kids. Sometimes the kids would come in and I knew something was going on. And I'd say, tell me. And they'd tell me and I'd tell them what I thought. And they would say, we knew you were going to say that. And I said, I don't treat you any differently. To me, they're my kids. I ran into one today in Walmart and he said, Ms. Winmeyer, I remember when you told a bunch of us boys, you took us in your room and you said, you guys stink. You need to start using deodorant. You need to start showering. And I said, of everything we did, that's what you remember? And he said, well, that made a big impact on me. He said, I didn't have anybody to tell me that at home. So, I would appreciate your vote because I'm passionate about these kids in our school system. I love the teachers. I have so many friends that are teachers. And I want the best for them and the best for our kids. And I want to see our kids and our families all succeed. Thank you for having this forum. I appreciate everything you all did to get it together. And thank you all for coming and at least getting what we all have to say.
Let's give them a round of applause. Thank you again, candidates, for coming and not knowing what your questions were going to be and being able to speak on the spot. It isn't always an easy thing to do as someone who teaches public speaking. And I would say that, you know, keep the conversation going. I'm going to direct you to, on the next slide, the election website where you can find out information, of course, about timely, you know, information about like the timeline of when to register and to do early voting and those types of things. But also a reminder of who your candidates are. And you can always reach out and talk with them more if you have questions. I want to thank our partners again and our community moderators who joined us here this evening. I also want to thank you all for being here and those who will watch online later. Again, this will be available on the Choose Civility Allegheny County YouTube channel, which will be on the Allegheny County Library Assistant website as well as on social media. And share it. Share it. Let others see this and spread the word so that people can learn more about who the candidates are, what's on the table, you know, what's at stake and what we're trying to think about in terms of the future of our Board of Education. And that's our evening. So, thank you again.